Okay, evening everyone. I'm gonna get going here. Our treasure is very nasty, it should be held up.
Excuse me, I am not.
Tonight we'll go over the budget review. Hand it over to you, Michelle.
So, this packet, I did the cover sheets that go along with the tentative budget. It's the same messages that you pretty much see every year, explains how the budget works. That's the first three pages, some highlights that we all talked about. And then the schedules just highlight, you know, how much we're raising for taxes, what the fire and service award is, their percentages, you know, rate per thousand. Very boring numbers. I did do, which is on the copier when it restarts itself, I did a general fund projection for the end of this fiscal year. Cause we're nine months, over nine months in. And that way I could get a fund balance. I think as we stand right now, for a year ending in two months, we're gonna have revenues over expenses of about ninety-five thousand. I already assumed that the firehouse roof was going to be paid. So that's after that, ninety-five thousand. Mostly that's due to accounts that we budgeted for that we do not need. Four thousand dollars for fire inspector, that didn't happen. Three thousand dollars for extra building inspector contractual stuff. That's seven. I had assumed the new village clerk was going to take health insurance when I did the budget. That's over twenty thousand right there. Eight thousand dollars for snow removal contractual, we didn't need this year unless we have storms in the week or two. So those are big ticket items that, you know, add up. And then the rest is just savings throughout the year. So with that ninety-five thousand, from the firehouse roof of the ninety-nine, seventy-five was coming from fund balance. So it kind of replenishes that, but then we still have an extra twenty going into it. If we end up with a little more, it might not be a bad idea to look into maybe purchasing a vehicle in May instead of... Cause we have the money for that extra payment now. So we have one and then only two years forward instead of three years forward of the unknown.
Do you have the time to do that? You have the time to get the... You're going in with state, on the state contract?
On the state contract. The state bids once we give them... It's a letter saying we have the funds and it's approved to be purchased. It takes them about two to three weeks to bid out to the people on contract. And then it's just finding out if someone has it in stock or not.
To look at the police car and the highway as looking for a vehicle?
Mm-hmm, highway looking for utility stock.
Which one is easier to purchase, the police?
I think, I think it'd be the utility truck.
Probably the utility truck.
Cause you have to outfit the...
The police, you buy a base model that's eligible to be outfitted and then it's gotta be installed with the police package.
Cause when I bought the last truck for Ed, there was a lot of stuff he needed on it that had to be added separately. If this was just a...
Charlie had suggested whatever Greg uses at water and sewer. So I don't know how difficult it was to find what Greg had wanted for that utility body. As long as it has the capabilities for a plow, they're really just looking for stuff to hold their tools.
Which is more pressing?
I think both. I don't think there's one that's more pressing, seriously.
So we've got April and we've got two months.
I think highway has two trucks, one's totally dead, the other one's definitely ready to go, they're red and white. I mean, you can't use those for plowing. And then the police are definitely need one or two.
But we're talking a difference of maybe two to three months between the purchase of one and the purchase...
Yeah.
So...
We're looking at, you know, having delivery, you know, probably by May twenty-fifth.
Yeah, that's...
And then, um...
That'd be tight, cause you need delivery this year.
You know, probably by August for the other one.
You need to have delivery this year in order to budget, in order to put it through the show.
It should be delivered, but if it's ordered, would you do that too? And not just, we say it's ordered, like actually ordered in production.
The contracts.
Yeah. Cause then I can roll over a big ticket item like that. So that's something to consider. I'm pretty com- comfortable with that ninety-five thousand. I actually think it's a little conservative. But we don't know what's gonna happen in the next two months, so I kept, you know, I... And that ninety-five thousand, I put extra money in for fifteen hundred extra recreation in case they wanted to do a door this year. And put in some money for village hall this year in case we wanted to start. So if we don't do any of that, we save that for next year, you know, you'll have more money. It all comes down to timing.
What do you need to get either the police car or the highway slash water, a truck going? What do you need from us?
We just need to be the approval to purchase one like in the minutes, you know?
I'm, I'm for it, everyone else? Steve?
So, do you wanna make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we use, that we purchase either the police vehicle requested by the police department or highway's utility body truck, whichever we can...
Get in.
Get here, in time.
In this fiscal year?
Okay.
Or whichever, well, you're saying we order, we could definitely order either one, right? So I'd leave that up to you, one of the two vehicles.
The second motion?
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just to be clear, Michael, if you could just put the board approves funding for one of those two vehicles. Thank you. And then that's all the state needs to see.
So, you and I had an email conversation today about an additional ten thousand dollars for in the two thousand eighteen-nineteen budget for NYSERTA. I, I don't know if you had a chance to put that in?
I did not, I didn't make any changes from the email that I sent out.
Okay.
But the good thing about NYSERTA is it's on the revenue and the expense side.
Yes, it's on the...
So it does not affect the bottom line.
It doesn't, exactly. So what we're planning to do, just so that everyone is aware, Michelle had allocated five thousand dollars as both a revenue and an expense for the code update committee for the NYSERTA grant. Because we're accelerating our schedule, I'd like to make that fifteen thousand dollars in fiscal year two thousand eighteen-nineteen. It's both revenue and an expense, so it balances out, please, Michelle, so...
So then just to continue on through the schedules, just a debt schedule for the general fund, salary estimates for the general fund and then water and sewer. Water and sewer, it's hard to project those funds cause you don't know what's gonna break or how it's going to operate or whatnot. So, for illustrative purposes, I project those fund balances both to be zero right now. I don't think they're gonna be zero, but I have them as being no change right now.
We, we had talked a week or so ago about increasing the sewer flat rate.
Yes.
And we are showing a, although, although it's coming out as a balance, it seems as if now is a good time to, to increase, consider increasing the sewer flat rate.
Yes, and to add on to that, thank you. So, last week Jeff and I spoke with EFC. So, the two projects that Greg is doing, we did the sewer relining and now we're doing the pump station.
Right.
EFC funded us up to eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Then we got a grant for two fifteen, two hundred and fifteen, which is contingent upon spending, it's like a twenty-five percent match. If we don't spend the whole eight seventy-five, we're not getting the whole two fifteen. So I talked to EFC and they had said, you know, once you go to bond, it'll probably be in January, cause all the projects will be done, you'll have one year to make a payment. I had asked for a schedule because I wanted an estimate of what that payment was going to be. So that would've put us two fiscal years out. And I get a phone call today that EFC reached out to Munistat, which is not Bond Council, but Noah, the guy that does the calculations and stuff, to work together. That EFC told him they're gonna bond in January, but they might accelerate the payment schedule to be two months down the road. Noah said that he doesn't usually see this, but EFC has done this to one other village in the past. It's just a type of bond that they purchase, it's whatever's in the market. So I didn't have a bond payment in for this year for the sewer fund to repay these projects because I was under the impression it was gonna be the next fiscal year. Rough estimate of a minimum payment if we expend that whole eight seventy-five and take out the two fifteen. If you don't take out the two fifteen, that's just eight seventy-five, it's fifty thousand dollars. So you take out the two fifteen, Noah is rerunning that cause he didn't know about the grant when I spoke to him earlier today. So I would imagine, you know, say maybe forty-two thousand without knowing the exact number. But we don't have that money in the sewer fund without raising rates.
So, and I did not bring with me the spreadsheet that, that you had sent.
This is it.
Sent me and that Jeff had... What is the, the current rate is two... Two twenty ba-ba-ba per quarter? What is the current rate per quarter?
The sewer, it's seventy something dollars, seventy-eight dollars per quarter.
It's three twelve, it's three, three hundred and twelve dollars a year.
I got it, I got it.
So we're gonna bond the, um, the eight seventy-five?
That was always the intention. EFC gives you short-term financing to get the ball rolling, to get the project done. And then once the project's done, it goes into long-term financing, which is a bond.
Which is totally set for the bond we're gonna do for the dam.
Yes. This is bond through the state, through special financing, special, special pricing. And then the, the state subsidizes part of the interest on this bond. I guess you could say it's, it's not like private bond, which is what we would be doing for the other projects we've done in the dam. So the sewer fund is kind of thin, even with, without raising rates. I had to take some money out of the fund balance to balance the budget.
But although the, the new aerator system, we made a remarkable difference.
But we're still paying for that in a ban now that we've...
Exactly, exactly. So we've, we've done a bunch of things to lower the operating cost of the sewer system without changing the, the cost to our users. We have more work coming up, the pump stations.
Right.
And so I think it's appropriate to consider that.
Seventy-eight thirty?
Seventy-eight thirty, so, about three hundred and twelve. Okay, so, would the board like to consider an additional ten dollars a quarter? So...
I think I'd have to really sit down and run the numbers. This all came to me today as I was walking out the door about this bond payment. Cause I don't know off the top of my head what, you know, forty dollars a year is gonna do.
So we can, we can, we still have time to do this even though this is the tentative, but we can still...
This is the tentative budget, we have, the adopted budget. We have a public hearing in two more weeks. And then we just have to adopt by, I think we're gonna... If we don't do it after that public hearing, it could be done at the last workshop in April.
So, well, can we, we'll table this then for the, for the next meeting? And if you just send us some numbers?
Yeah, I'm gonna prepare something and I have to wait for Noah to give me the rates with the two fifteen taken into consideration. And realistically, what we're really gonna spend is the eight seventy-five has about a hundred thousand dollars in contingencies in it. And I know that, you know, the sewer relining didn't go over, you know, the contracted amount. Or it did very slightly, if anything. So we have to look at, you know, the project as a whole. Unfortunately, the project's not gonna be done until, you know, May, the pump station. So I'll have to assume the most expensive for budget purposes.
But if there's no one hundred K contingency?
I wouldn't use all of it.
Yeah. Because it's already done, the one pump station.
The relining, not the pump station, the relining was done.
Oh, okay, but he's, he, did the, the pump station move from West Street to Market Street a year or so ago, two years ago?
That was way out, it was not this, this year, that was. Now they're doing one, uh, by the train station, huh?
Okay, so if you could put that on the agenda for next week?
Yeah, and to increase the rate, you'll need enough resolution.
Right, right, and it would be the sewer flat rate, not the use rate.
And then, um, the water, we don't have to touch, there's no bond payment this year. Water's doing pretty well anyway. If we wanted to increase water, something we could do next year. So we don't have to do both. Also, it gives us time to see with the DEP if they're gonna charge us anything, you know, take it all into consideration at one.
Right, right.
So that brings us through all the schedules. I had emailed everybody the changes that I made, these were them. You know, just the ups and downs to get us where we are. All the changes we talked about two weeks ago, I've made those. So then I made some changes to revenues, some changes to expenses. Net, we had ten thousand dollars extra. So I put it into a contingency account just to save it for safekeeping right now. I didn't take anything out, it's just extra money. Now, last week or when we spoke, I had taken six thousand dollars out of highway cause I was looking at it and I was like, the equipment line seems really high. Well, it was really high because we needed to have two car, two payments for next year. Finish the plow that we have now and then the new one. That was my error, I thought it was paid off in August. There's one more payment. So that ten thousand, six of it came from highway anyway. So if I put the ten thousand back into equipment, then it becomes thirty thousand dollars in snow equipment or highway equipment, which is thirteen thousand for the last payment, fifteen thousand for a new one on the high side, and twenty-five hundred for a plow equipment. So I'm gonna take that ten thousand back out of the contingent account and put it into highway. And we still have four and five thousand as an emergency reserve in that contingent account. That was the only big change that wasn't on those sheets that I just handed out. So Murray, this NYSERTA number is old, the five thousand?
Yes.
I'm gonna increase it a little more.
Fifteen, right.
Yep.
One thing that I would like to add, maybe if the board's willing, is I'd like to bring, is the part time, is that for Tom Hopper, for fifteen thirty?
Um, yes.
I, I would like to bring that up to sixteen dollars. I think Tom's invaluable for us. Without Tom, half the time we wouldn't have garbage. And he's, I mean, yeah, we would have garbage all over. I mean, he's like an amazing worker and he's there all the time. And it's his thing, bringing that up like seventy cents an hour. If you could figure that out, if the board's...
Make a motion.
I would like to make a motion that we raise Tommy Hopper part-time for garbage to sixteen dollars an hour.
Second?
All in favor?
Can I check for the meeting?
Or with the new?
It would be with a new, with a new budget, right?
If you wanted to do it now, we could do it now.
Okay. Do we need to...
He's at fifteen now.
It's fifteen thirty now.
He's at fifteen in the current year with a two percent raise, he gets the fifteen thirty next year.
Oh, okay.
So if we gave him sixteen now, I would hold him sixteen flat next year.
Yes, yes, yes.
I can, I can find for the rest of the year.
Okay, thank you. As far as the building inspector, how are we doing with that? Or how much we actually brought in revenue for the first year this year, right? Or no, or how, how does that work?
Yeah, so far, through the end of February, with the building department, at thirty-two thousand through the end of February. So, twenty thousand...
That's above the...
Twenty thousand dollars we keep and then of the twelve, roughly of the twelve thousand, about half of it, Phillips Town is eligible for, a little less.
Is it that high?
Oh no, I'm sorry, I'm projecting through the end of the year to be thirty-two thousand. Right now, we're sitting at twenty-eight four.
Twenty-eight four, that's great. And not all of that is shared with the town, with the town?
Most of it, right.
Maybe less than a thousand is...
Shared with the town?
Less than a thousand is not shared.
Oh, correct, yeah, it's, it's...
A small amount.
Yeah, it was like six hundred, seven hundred, that's for title searches and...
Right.
And dumpster permits.
Other questions?
Fantastic job, as always, Michelle, thank you.
Thanks, Michelle.
I just wanna hand these out for later on. These are just the finance, as if, cause I didn't do a financial report last time cause I wanted to do the projection. That's what these are. So this is basically the big highlight, is the ninety-five thousand revenue over expense. It goes line by line, I've estimated pretty much whatever I knew was coming. Did utility worksheets, so that all electricity is an average. It's a little better than the six-month line because we're so far into the year now. So if you have any questions on that, if you read it at home or don't read it, just email me. I know it's a lot of numbers, that's why I didn't really wanna spend a lot of time on it. But it's my backup of where I got that ninety-five thousand from.
We did add for recyclables now costing, that we...
Fifty-one dollars a ton now, yeah.
Jacked up to that much more?
Fifty and change.
Yeah, it started out at forty-one and dollar seventy-three or four.
Well, apparently it started out at thirty-three back in December.
They never told us about it, no?
So for the, the new budget and the projection, I used fifty and a little extra on the tonnage, you know, because I don't know what's gonna happen. You know, if it keeps going up at this rate, we're gonna be at, you know, eighty dollars, which is almost the price of garbage.
Same as the garbage, yeah. And what's the total for at fifty-one, about, you know, the...
We just, we just saw the February numbers, I think it was under a thousand...
Eight hundred, I'd wanna say seven forty-seven, maybe?
Seven hundred and s- change for, for, for pickups.
It's RE recycling, so it should be towards the back.
Yeah, let's see.
For RE community maybe?
Yeah, RE community. And because...
And that compares with about thirty-three hundred to wheel abrader for the same month.
Looks like half of the tonnage, huh?
It's more than half of the tonnage, yeah. The, the work that you did a couple of weeks ago.
This is?
Oh, I see, okay. Twenty-eight...
It was handwriting.
Four percent or twenty-eight point nine percent of the garbage is... So if you take the total garbage tonnage times twenty-eight point four...
Yeah, it was like a seventy-thirty split, I think it was.
Yeah.
So it's...
Pretty close.
So we're paying thirty-three for garbage and how much for recycling?
We're paying eighty-something for garbage a ton. And we had been paying, in the February bill, it's forty, forty-one and change per ton, but it's going up again.
Fifty.
And what, that bill was what, like seven fifty?
They increased it over the states of what, three weeks?
Well, they increased it, they notified us February twentieth that it was effective February first. And apparently you've gotten a second notice.
This past week if we got a second, we've got a notice for March.
And the March went up to...
Fifty and change.
Yeah.
And suppose that we just kicked in back in October or something?
I'm not sure if one had kicked in. I'm not sure if one had kicked in.
I got a bill going back to October, but October...
Unfortunately, it's...
Skip November, I think, December, January, February, March is coming.
For you, you, at your home?
No.
Here?
Here. Someone emailed me from RE community about past due notices and that's what sparked Jeff and I to reach out to them and say, you know, when did this start? We thought it started in February and hadn't really gotten very far with them yet.
And it's recently, as the last quarter of last year, we were getting money back, back?
Yes. Through the summer.
I mean, it's going to get to the point very shortly where it's not gonna be worth it to bother recycling.
I think we're obligated to by law.
Yeah, it's a law.
Yeah, we have that, yeah.
It's not much of a incentive, that's one way to look at it.
How does that work? Because some communities still...
It was garbage before it now.
I believe New York State law requires that you handle it and recycle it. You can't just dump it into your garbage. I'd have to check.
It's been a lot for a long time.
Yeah.
Moving along from garbage. Very topic.
So, any last questions before we head out?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Michelle, thank you very much.
Okay, next is Consider Resolution eleven, two thousand eighteen, authorize Mayor Randy to enter into a contract for sale of real property sixty-nine dash seventy-one Main Street. There's a small stoop in front of Barbara and Brew. I'm not gonna get through this whole thing, I don't think. It's a page or so long. The sale is, we've been charging, I believe it's four dollars a square foot, is that right? And the total is, price would not be less than three hundred and ninety-two thousand, or, yeah. That'll solve a lot of our problems, three hundred, three hundred and ninety-two dollars. And they pay for all, any kind of title searches or any surveying or attorneys on either side. Please, so I'll make a motion to, oh, I can make that motion.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to authorize Mayor Randy to sign Resolution eleven dash two zero one eight to enter into a contract for the sale of real property sixty-nine seventy-one Main Street.
Second?
Roll call, Michael.
Who is the second, I'm sorry?
Murray.
Roll call, Mayor Morandi?
Aye.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Voloto?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, next, authorize Mayor to sign memorandum of agreement with Coal Spring Fire Company. As you know, we've been going back... What's that?
Should've been Shell State for this part.
That's right.
We're tied for this one.
As you know, like about a year ago, or was it two years ago, we started having, you know, their issues arose by, by Nelsonville as far as its LoSAP and their payments. And so, the negotiations are still going on, although I think we're there. And in so doing, we, we needed to come up with like, one of the things dealing, talking to the fire company's attorney was that they, you know, they didn't know how much they were getting, you know? They were agreeing to, they would come budget time with their budget, we would agree on that, add LoSAP workers' comp and Penflex. But then they didn't know exactly what they were getting. So what they, you know, asked us of us was to, you know, to give us, to give them that number, the number that they were getting after the agreement was said and done and after, you know, everything was added in. So what we thought we would do is, you know, break everything down, moving forward, how everything would work. Went the dates for when we would negotiate the contract with them, when they would bring us their, their numbers. And then moving forward of that, when we would, with the costs of every, what was included in the costs and the breakdown between Phillips Town and Nelsonville and Coal Spring. And so that's all in the memorandum of agreement. And then the final line is how much out of the total that the fire company would expect to get and, in, in two payments. And so, what we'd like to do is authorize this tonight. We did send Matt and the attorney, Matt's still sending the attorney, a prior agreement. We've made some adjustments to that, you know, nothing major, but, so this is the agreement that we like to send out. So, I need someone to make that motion, I think it's another me authorizing, so, we can discuss.
Oh, authorize, I will, what am I doing? I'll make a motion to authorize Mayor Morandi to sign the memorandum of agreement with the Coal Spring Fire Company for an agreement which expires December thirty-first, twenty eighteen. Uh, for an agreement which expires December thirty-first, twenty eighteen.
And the second?
I'll second.
Discussion.
Yes. Um, item number three, is there any way that we can restate that? So that the workers' comp and LoSAP can be based upon current year or projected year? Cause right now it says it's based on previous years.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and as we know, that's, that's a big ticket item, s- certainly LoSAP is a, LoSAP and Penflex are a big ticket item. If we base it on the previous year, so if we're talking about executing this agreement and doing this work in September of two thousand eighteen, we would be using two thousand seventeen data as opposed to the data that we're using in two thousand eighteen. And by that time, we may actually have knowledge of what's going to happen in two thousand nineteen. So can we, can we, for both the second and the third bullet item, cost of workers' compensation insurance, uh, can we annotate there to be based on current, uh, or future?
I think the problem is that we don't have the current data, and that's why, that's why it's worded this way. And that's why we're going to the previous year, because if we had the data, then we wouldn't have to go to a previous year.
Uh, I thought, I thought we got Penflex and our workers' comp toward the end of the calendar year or the beginning of the year.
Well, all the difficulty started was the year we didn't get either of them, and they both were jacked up, and that's how we kind of started into.
I thi- I think, yeah. I think originally we looked at, um, using the estimates for the future year and then doing adjustments back and forth. And Michelle said, you know, she would prefer not doing the adjustments. Uh, it's just easier for her to pull all these numbers out of her budget, all from the same column, from the same year, from the same time. Uh, and then, yes, we're gonna be lagging, but, you know, it, it's.
We're eating a lot of money in this.
Well, we're not, because we're getting it the following year, it's just a case that we're getting.
But each year, it, each year we're.
And it, and like, like what happened this year with LoSAP, well, it went down, it went down significantly.
And, and we were all very surprised.
That's never gonna happen.
Because the history.
And it went, well, it went down because of the adjustments.
But it was this year that it went down.
And last year it went down too.
In two thousand eighteen, so we, we're in March, and from what you said, we, we have the date in two thousand eighteen for.
We do, well, we don't have, we do not have two thousand eighteen, that, that's still being worked on.
Okay.
So right now, we do not have it.
I, I accept that we don't have it right now, when is it due? What is the date or quarter when LoSAP or workers' comp is?
Well, the problem is if we're trying to get this to municipalities and they're working on their budget, the same thing that happened. And why we got into this was that they, they're not gonna get the information in time to do their budget.
Okay, so I'm just asking, when do we get the data? Because if we get the data in July or August, we can get it incorporated.
We used to get, um, I don't remember when, but we used to get an estimate from LoSAP and they swore that their number was set in stone until it wasn't set in stone, and we had to come back and realize that everything was gonna change after we worked on it. But we used to get it way advanced and based our budget, and I, and I don't remember exactly when, but I remember doing this with Mary and speaking to the man on the phone, and it was, you know, it's a set in stone, it's never gonna change, it's never gonna change, and then it did change significantly. Um, so, you know, I don't know, and the answer would be something that would come from Michelle. Um, but I'm, I'm comfortable with, with Michelle being able to pull all these numbers from her budget from the same time period, rather than saying LoSAP and workers' comp is coming from this year and the rest of them are coming from that year, um, cause it's very confusing.
There are two items that would be coming from this year.
I know, but it, but then it, but then it just offsets, uh, I just think it makes it easier to go.
That's all, just two items. And, and as far as the four bullets here, the fourth bullet, we're getting in bu- in item number one. The, the fourth bullet identifies the Coal Spring Fire Company operating expenses, which we are going to obtain from them and agree with them by October fifth.
I think these are, aren't these the operating expenses that are in our budget? Not the ones they're using, aren't these the ones that come out of our numbers?
I'm sorry?
The sirens, the utilities, these are the ones we pay, not the ones that.
I'm sorry, I'm so, you're right, Fran. The, the, um, the first item in number three is equivalent to item number one, which is what we get by October fifth. So, so, what?
Now, the first item in number three is the cost of fire protection service. That's why the fire company comes back and says, okay, for the three municipalities, this is what we're charging for fire protection services.
Isn't that number one?
Um. Their budget's gonna be more than what they're charging for fire protection services, it's gonna be different. I mean, there's other things, but, but they're asking for from the municipalities, we don't have all that information to look at. We need their books to see if, if it's the same thing.
If, if what you're saying is true, that we don't know what that is, then I don't know how we can execute this MOA. I thought what it was saying, I thought what the MOA was saying, is that the Coal Spring Fire Company is going to, we're gonna work with the Coal Spring Fire Company through October fifth of, of two thousand eighteen, and this would be renewed every year going back. By October fifth, the Coal Spring Fire Company would, and we would agree on how much money they are going to receive from the municipalities for their operating costs.
Yes, I'm wrong, that was, that was, I missed the spot.
Okay, so, so item number one is equal to the first bullet point in number three.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And for item.
And is that a problem? They have a tree dundun?
No.
Oh, okay, I thought you, there was a problem with it, okay.
No. No, 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 it's, it, I understand where it's coming from. The Coal Spring Fire Company operating expenses, item bullet number four, we're saying we're gonna take them from the two thousand seventeen, um, two thousand eighteen, um, budget. So although by September, we will have, um, four months of actuels, we're going to use that which we will have as of May of this year.
Got you.
Okay, so I'm, I'm not happy with that, but I understand that.
Mm-hmm.
Where I think we can do better, if the numbers are available to us, is to use the, the most up-to-date LoSAP and, um, workers' comp numbers. If they are available by October fifth, I think we should use them.
Let me, let me go back for a second, I, I hear what you're saying, you just, but the first half of what you said, um, the operating expenses.
Okay, so operating expenses with, I believe, um, correctly, if I'm wrong, read, so the first and fourth bullet point, we really don't want is going on the, uh, previous years, because we have that data.
Well, that's what I'm just asking, the fourth one, if, if it's the seventeen eighteen operating expenses, that's, that's finished by May, uh, the end of May of twenty eighteen. So by September of twenty eighteen, we've got those numbers.
Yes.
They're, they're done, they're finished, it's nothing that we're going to be a couple of months into that year, we're gonna have a full twelve months.
Although we say in the, in the paragraph, in the last sentence of the paragraph in number three, the total amount due in the agreements will be based on the previous year actuels for the following items.
Right.
I am asu- I had assumed that that was fiscal, sorry, calendar year two thousand seventeen. If, if it is actually fiscal year two thousand seventeen, eighteen, we all know where they're coming from.
Mm-hmm.
And is that what we mean, fiscal year two thousand seventeen, eighteen?
It's the fire company's fiscal year, so that's the same, which is the same as calendar year.
Sorry, sorry, but, no, 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 I, I'm in the co- I'm sorry, I'm in item number three. Well, number four.
I believe that's our fiscal year, yeah.
And these are the Coal Spring Fire Company operating expenses, which come out of our budget. So this should be from the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen village budget.
That should be our fiscal year.
And they're gonna be actuels.
Mm-hmm. That's the way I understand it.
And the first bullet in number three is going to be the result of item number one. It just flows right into there. So the question, sorry, what I would like to see is that bullet number two and bullet number three are based whatever the dates are that we get, workers' comp, if it is prior to October fifth and if the Penflex, sorry, if the LoSAP, Penflex numbers are prior to October fifth, I'd like to have those used as opposed to numbers that we got in two thousand seventeen or early in two thousand eighteen.
See why they pull them from two different, well, pull one part from budget and one part from, one part from actuals and one part from budget.
Actually, there are four parts, one part is from the actuels, one part is from the budget that, that, uh, the Coal Spring Fire Company gives us. And the other two are whatever the most recent numbers are for LoSAP, Penflex and workers' comp.
I would want, I'd wanna run that by Michelle.
I think if we have the numbers, I don't mind. She's still here, I understand.
I think she's still, yeah.
Yeah, here, we might, I think if we can do that, I think we should, if that causes complications, then I don't think it should.
She thought she was gonna.
Most previous, I think, would work.
I don't know, she would know exactly when they come, you know, when those numbers come in.
Right.
Actually, what I would do for a workers' comp, if, if the numbers are not available by October fifth, then I would say it comes from the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen village budget. So bullets one, two, three and four, if the numbers aren't available, then two, three and four come from the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen village budget.
Yeah, but the operating expenses should be actuels, not budgets.
No, because we're in October, we wouldn't be.
We're closed, the budget, the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen budget is closed.
In the two thousand, by September, the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen actuels are done.
Yeah.
And so we, so we pull actuels, we don't wanna pull budget.
Well, the budget, the two thousand seventeen, eighteen budget is an actual by that time.
Okay.
Word it whatever we want.
Right.
Whichever way you want. Other than that, I think this is fine.
Hello, Michelle, you thought you were going home.
Yeah.
Okay, so now this is worded in here, on, under number three, we have the total amount due and the agreement will be based on previous year's actuels when a number of the bullet points we will actually have the actuels for. Like, the first bullet point and the fourth will have the actuels for, correct?
What do you mean we'll?
I mean, we, you know, it's saying we use, uh, previous year's actuels when we don't, we have.
Could be based on the current year.
The current year.
The two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen budget actuels will be done by September fifteenth. So we use what we ended the fiscal year with, which is equivalent to actuels.
We're gonna be on a one-year lag for everything.
But do we have to be on a one-year lag for, well, before we get into work with LoSAP, for fire protection service? We have that, why would we?
And that's not gonna be in the contract.
So the fire, what the fire company is asking for is a January through December number. We operate ju- June to May. So if the fire company asks for us, from us in January, in theory, we could put it into these contracts. But if we keep everything on a one-year lag, no matter what, then I think it's the fairest way so that we're not teeter tottering between what's based on last year, what's based on new year. So if the fire company's numbers go up, our numbers will go up for one year, but then we recoup it in the following year, which is what you had said in an email earlier.
Mm-hmm. But the, 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 so there are four elements in there. The first element is the fire company's projected budget.
Mm-hmm.
And that is going to be based on the calendar year two thousand seventeen, for, for this agreement, calendar year two thousand seventeen.
Which agreement is this from? This is eighteen, nineteen agreement, right?
Actually, it says December thirty-first, two thousand eighteen.
This is for the MOA.
Okay.
What it says is the previous year's, um, uh, using the previous year's actuels.
Yes.
So that's two thousand seventeen, calendar year two thousand seventeen, which is their fiscal year. And what they project for calendar year two thousand nineteen. There's no taking into account any actuels for two thousand eighteen, I find that.
Where are we getting two thousand nineteen from?
Cause it says next year.
Where does it say next year?
It's a anticipated upper year expenses for the following year.
This year? Yeah, they'll present it to us.
Yeah.
But it doesn't mean that the number that. Okay, well, it depends on what we're talking about.
Okay.
So I don't know where we are in the agreement. And so when the fire company asks us for money, we're giving them, as long as we agree with what they ask for, we're gonna give it to them if it's reasonable. You know, they ask for one percent increase or two percent increase this year, we agree to it. How we, as the village, gather that money is a different subject, so that's what's based on the prior year stuff. What we're gonna give the fire company is based on, yes, what they want. But what we charge Phillips Town and Nelsonville is a one-year lag, so it's two separate things.
So.
So we can't combine, I guess.
But I, I'm, go ahead.
I'm sorry, um, can we take, if they, if they in September say to us, we need hundred and twenty thousand for next year, why can't we use that in number, in number three? The cost of fire protection, they've asked us, I feel like what you're.
Cause I was trying to be consistent, so that when we do a formula to figure out, you know, the percentage that we're charging Phillips Town and Nelsonville, it's all based on the same criteria. It's all from actuels for a certain period of time.
I, I can, I can see doing that for what you're gonna pull out of our actuels and our, and our expenses. But the number of the cost of fire protection is a number that they're giving us, it's not any place in your budget yet.
But it's also, I'd have to figure out how to split it, because they're, what they're asking for us is on a different fiscal year than how we operate. Um, so I'd have to see if that would even work. Um, that's why doing everything on a lag, I thought, would be clean.
Let's, let's throw some numbers in there, let's say.
What's, what's the amount, what, first of all, before we say what we're gonna do, I think there's five people on the board. What, what, if, what are we talking about in the difference in price? I know things can go up considerably or whatever. I mean, I mean, how much of a difference would the lag cost us? Say, the next, the next year, I mean, the actuels for the year and we're basing on a previous year, I mean, what, what's the difference? What's the spread? What are we talking? Thousand, two thousand, ten thousand? I mean, if we're talking a thousand or two thousand dollars.
So in, in the past, LoSAP used to increase exponentially, we have since fixed that problem. LoSAP will either stay steady within five thousand dollars either way, or go down a little bit more before it starts to go back up. LoSAP is doing very well right now, we're not going to see those days of seventy, eighty thousand dollar payments anymore. So that's a big factor. So if LoSAP changes a few thousand, um, which it probably is gonna go down again for the next two years or stay the same, then you have workers' comp, um, it went down this year because we switched insurance companies. So that was sixteen thousand, in the past, it was eighteen or nineteen thousand. Um, heat oil, it's the market rate, repairs, um, they're pretty consistent at three or four thousand. This cost of electricity usually goes up maybe five percent, so a couple thousand at most. But it could, we could have a good year and it could go down a couple thousand.
I think what makes it easier, in my opinion, I, I think what makes it easier for, for accounting and for consistency. And, and I think that's why we worked it the way we did here and used everything on the previous year. Now, anyone else feels?
So if you do that, if you do, I'm not talking to you.
No, sorry.
If you do that, you base it on the previous year, is, uh, will the LoSAP number go down in what is presented to the Coal Spring Fire Company in two thousand eighteen?
It, so it'll go down the following year that we see it go down.
So it won't go down when we present them, when we present Phillips Town and Nelsonville with their two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen numbers. It will not come down because it's based upon two thousand seventeen LoSAP numbers.
If the LoSAP numbers for us were seventeen, eighteen, so, I'm confused with the different years.
You know, this is, this is what, I just, I'm sorry.
Can you rephrase your question?
Yes, let's try. When, if we were to fill in the numbers for, uh, for the, for the agreement that we're going to be sending them at the end of two thousand eighteen.
Sending who?
Phillips Town, Phillips Town, Nelsonville.
Okay.
Uh, it will be based upon, using the logic that, that was just proposed here, we would be basing it on two thousand seventeen LoSAP numbers and two thousand seventeen workers' comp numbers.
Seventeen eighteen numbers.
Yeah, seventeen eighteen numbers, so really.
Did those numbers go down? Because there is a mine set that says the numbers are going down.
LoSAP numbers have gone down.
Are they down in two thousand seventeen, eighteen from where they were in two thousand sixteen, seventeen?
Yes.
Okay.
They went down from seventy-nine to sixty-five, and now they're going down to forty-five.
Okay, but they won't see it going down to forty-five, they'll only see it going down, they'll only see it going down to sixty-five.
They'll see it in a year. Cause I'm making that sixty-five payment this May.
And if, if I were them, I'd be angry. And if, if I were them, I'd be angry because I'd want the benefit of the forty-five.
They'll see the benefit next year.
They'll see it next year. This is the agreement they have.
And that's what we had talked about, I thought, with, um, the Nelsonville trustees. And that we had all come to this because originally it was, oh, who's gonna get a rebate, we got an estimate. Because if we use actual numbers, some of the numbers are ended up going to be, they won't be actuals. If you want current numbers, we'd use the word current, it's gonna be a fifteen-month projection of things that I don't even have. Right now, if we use prior year, I'm projecting a month or two through the end of the year, like April and May. Otherwise, I'd have to do April, May, and all of next year. So that's where the whole rebate thing came in, all of them negotiated at the end of the contract, and I didn't like that idea. So then I thought, that's why we all came to the agreement that we would just base everything off of a prior year, and everybody will see the savings or the increase, it's just a matter of time who sees it in what year.
Okay, then what I recommend it be, restated is the total amount due and agreements will be based on the previous fiscal year act, actuals.
Village fiscal, Village of Cold Spring fiscal year.
Village of Cold Spring, yes.
Yeah, I would, I would just ask on someone, Michelle, don't move. Well, I understand everything else here, the cost of the Fire Protection Service, the number that they come into us with in September, why can't we use that number? And then add to, add to the, all the other, I mean, I know, I realize that everything else is a lag, but that's a real number that they're coming in and saying, I need a hundred and twenty thousand, why isn't that? Why are we going back to what they asked us for the year before?
For consistency?
I see that, but I just think that this number is just easier because it's not real, um. So anytime, so.
Now, also.
I mean, they're, they're never gonna go down.
What they're, what the fire company asks for, you have to realize, we're already halfway through ours and Nelsonville's fiscal year. So the fire company is asking for one seventeen right now. Half of that payment's gonna be paid out of this, the current year's budget. And that's also why, I think, if we use the lag, because there, that one seventeen, it half applies to our pre- previous fiscal year, half applies to our next fiscal year. So we could use that argument, it's not all relevant, the whole hundred and seventeen, half of it's relevant. That's not a bad point, um, it's just if we wanna be, use all prior year, or we wanna do everything prior year, and then partially this from the current year, which we only take into consideration half of it then at that point. Because if our company operates six, um, seven months difference in a year.
I'm fine.
So the previous year, we're gonna put previous Village of Cold Spring fiscal year, is that right?
Yes, and, and, and it, it could even, for this agreement, because it's just for one year, you could even say, uh, based on the Village of Cold Spring, two thousand seventeen dash two thousand eighteen fiscal year. And then it, you render it very specific.
I'm fine with either.
And that's what you had intended.
Find faster, find faster.
That was easy. Thank you, Michelle.
So we do have a motion, we do have a second. All in favor with that slight adjustment?
Right, we need to amend the motion, so the motion, notion, you know what I mean?
Okay, so the motion will now say, I make a motion to authorize memorandum to sign the amended memorandum of agreement with Cold Spring Fire Company, and the amendment is in number three where it says, total amount due and agreements will be based on the preview, on the Village of Cold Spring seventeen, eighteen fiscal year actuals for the following items.
Second? Second. Oh, she gets her second, she gets it? No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Go for it.
I hate fire department, fire companies.
Yeah, but you know what, it's, it's gonna be easy after this, because we.
No, don't take that out of context.
It's gonna, it's gonna be easy after this, because this has been.
I would hope so, I can only hope and pray and whatever. Now what we have to do is have someone return something that we sent them.
Difficult, that's good.
Uh, next is, uh, should be an easier one, hopefully, I don't know. Approve hiring Cory Thomas to position of labor for, uh, with Highway Department at a rate of fifteen dollars an hour. I will make that motion.
Second?
Any discussion?
I didn't hear the second.
Wait a second. Just so everyone knows, we had, I think we had ten people, ten applicants, eight, uh, came in, or eight answered. Six, we interviewed, uh, myself and, and the Highway Crew Chief, Robert Downey. And so we're hiring two labors tonight. One's for Highway, which we just, uh, do we, uh?
We need a vote.
Yeah, all in favor on that?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, Cory Thomas, one we just approved, is for Highway. Second is for a split between, um, Water and Sewer and Highway, uh, they're gonna share this position. So I'd make a motion to approve the hiring of Zachary Mark, Zachary Markey to, to position of labor with the Highway and Water Sewer Department at a rate of fifteen dollars per hour.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Moving along, uh, correspondence, uh, Highway Department regarding East Belvedere and Hamilton. I have a email, or no, I don't, did I miss, uh, I missed something?
Signaled to the MOA.
Okay, I was, I was up to head man, Carrie, sorry. So this is from Robert Downey, I'm writing a request to Village cease and desist from entering onto East Belvedere and Hamilton Street to collect garbage and recycling. The streets are in need of repair and creates a safety issue for the Highway Department, personnel as well, it jeopardizes the condition of our equipment. Please let me know if you have any questions or need additional information. Would you like to just kind of elaborate on that at all, or what's, what the conditions are, or why you find it this way?
Uh, the conditions on East Belvedere are loaded with potholes. And when I'm backing up a truck that is, at that point, fully loaded, in order to stop going through potholes, it takes at least five to six feet, and with the bouncing, if they come off, there's no way I'm gonna stop in time. As of this week, I had them dismount upon backing in and walk in to get it. As far as Hamilton, it's in much better shape, but when it comes to plowing down around the circle, it's really hard with the equipment we have, and it really abuses our plow, plows greatly.
Those are both private streets, right?
I believe so, yes.
So, um, there are two things you're recommending that we stop doing. One is collecting garbage at the, at the street, um, on the street. At rather, the residents should bring their garbage out to Route ninety?
To me, that's the, that's up to the board. Alls I'm asking is for is just, uh, temporary cease and desist to, uh, until the road conditions get better.
Okay. We don't have to worry about snow.
No, hopefully not.
Right, I, we need to get the residents, how much notice do we need to get them?
Yeah, I take that back there.
I find, I mean, we, we definitely have to offer it to be picked up at the end of the, at the end of the street.
How much notice do we need to get the residents, we need to give them a leak or?
We need to give them notice?
Yeah. And, and then tell them what to do with the, with their garbage and recycle.
Well, just as the other private streets in the village, um, the residents of those private streets bring their garbage to the intersection with the Village Street, so that's Northern Gate and West Bank.
Correct.
Both bring their garbage to.
They just bring the bags down and whatever.
To Bank and, uh, to Cross, or, or.
Yes, to the intersection of.
Or Stone, whichever, right.
The other thing I can see is, um, East Belvedere and Hamilton, from what I gather, have a lot more houses than, um, Northern Gate do. So that's gonna be a lot of piled garbage on ninety.
Actually, I, I did a count of that, and, um, maybe by one or two frame.
Okay.
It's not terribly, terribly higher than Northern Gate or, uh, West Bank.
West Bank, I'm not familiar with that.
Yeah. That's because.
I was gonna say, are the residents aware that, that there's a problem with the road and we're not gonna?
You walk down the road.
No, I mean, that, that, this is happening.
More so, uh, East Belvedere, yes, I'm sure they're aware of it, um.
But we have a resident from East Belvedere.
Do you like any comment? Yeah, are you, yeah, anything else from the board, or anything else?
As long as we give them a, a notice.
Yeah, I know, I know that's what you're here for, and there's not a lot going on, so sure.
Okay, thank you. Um, well, the village has been taking care of that road forty, fifty years. According to Putnam County, uh, section one seventy-five, the village has owned it, not owned it, but because you've been taking care of it, you need to continue taking care of it. Uh, with what Robert's saying, I understand it. What's been done in the past, it just lay down some stone, fills it up. That's really it. I mean, it's, it's, I understand, it's a pain in the ass for me to drive through there, I can only imagine what the trucks are like. Again, simple fix, throw some dirt down, I mean, throw some rock down, item four, that fixes everything.
So it's not blacktop?
No.
No, it's something we've been trying to get for years, that's another issue, but it's out of their way. Yes, it is a private road, however, again, look at the code, the village has maintained it for more than ten years.
If that's the case, and you're sure of that, why had the residents forced us to maintain it?
They asked us.
Have them forced?
Ask, yeah, well, it sounds like forced would be the word, right?
No, we don't have to force, it's already, it's already.
But the thing, because you didn't want it blacktop, there was one of the things, was against it?
No, 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 no. Yeah, he's dead.
So why would they have a say in that if it's our road, according to this statute?
No, 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 you misunderstand what I said.
No, I'm not misunderstanding, go ahead.
It is a private road, the village has been maintaining the road.
Right.
Okay. At the moment, the village does not own the road. I'd be happy to convey the road to the village, I have no issue with that. Plainly simple. So because the village has been maintaining it, you need to continue maintaining it.
And why is that, though, if it's not our road?
Section one seventy-five, you're not listening to me.
Yes, I did listen to you.
Section one seventy-five, what are you?
I'll, I'll get you the code.
Okay.
County code?
Yeah.
And that's saying that because we maintain it, we have to maintain it?
Correct.
It's like a quality cloud check.
But then if we wanted to, then that seems like then it's our road.
Fine, I have no problem with that, like I said.
But there's, there's, there's neighbors that aren't in agreement with you and.
That neighbor's dead.
Well, I don't know anything about that.
You told me that you mean, I know better than you do on that. The neighbors that don't want it done, unfortunately, he passed away.
Okay, so when he passed away, which was how long ago?
I don't recall.
Well, I thought you were in the know, right?
Two or three years.
It's two or three years, why haven't, why haven't the residents once again tried to, you know?
Like, I'm busy, I don't.
Is it normal practice for the village to want to take a road over like that?
No.
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 All right. Well, it's, I mean, it may sound like the, the village was interested in that.
It's, it's, the, the village does not own the road bed. The road bed is owned by the residents of the street. So, for example, if there is a water main break, that's their water main.
Right.
And they, what typically has happened in the past is the village has repaired the water main, and then has built the residence. There, there was a, a resident, I think on your street, who was interested in putting in another house.
Right, that, that was gonna bring up, um, some of you know, Seamus Carroll. Seamus is gonna run a line down the middle, it's on, on his, on his dime, to get the property ready for, for building. All we were gonna do is connect, that would be our concept. That would be a nice fix, bigger pipe, better flow, we pay for our own connection, like this guy.
I think we're off the guard, the, uh, the topic at hand.
No, but to Marie's point, that's, that's, you know, that would alleviate any potential issue down the road in the village. Again, I have no problem conveying to the village, none whatsoever.
As you pointed out, Dave, there was an attempt to do that about four, let me say, four years ago.
Longer, in fact, in fact, I'm sorry, that's too rough. There was one gentleman who muddled it there, he didn't live there. This is when National Affairs was over here, and I didn't, they were paying that way. He came in, he complained of, when you moved there, the road is this, that, and the other thing. He didn't live there, didn't pay taxes, it was irrelevant. That is what it is.
So if you would send me the section that you were referring to, I can look into that. I believe that, that last year, the village did not repair the road, that was the town.
Yeah, I think Carl wanted to do it with the grader, it did some work up there.
Do you know why Carl did that?
I don't recall why, but I think he did it.
But the village did not?
I don't believe so.
And I don't think that.
I think Carl did it just out of goodwill and faith, just to do it.
Okay, so, so, Bugs, can you, uh, we'll, we'll get this information and we'll, and we'll send that to our attorneys and look at that. And then, so let's, uh, continue, just back up, or have our guys dismount for now.
Sir, for the time being, until it gets repaired, why don't we just request that the residents put their garbage out on Route ninety and, and move it back in, it would.
I thi- I think we can, can you, can you do one more week?
I can continue service.
Just one more week, we'll have an answer.
Yes, that's not a problem, I'll have them dismount, so the safety issue is taken care of.
Okay, sounds good, we'll get that information.
May I make a suggestion?
Sure.
I don't want the guys doing what they're doing, I understand, I don't want that truck damaged, because I'm gonna pay for the taxes, so it's everywhere here. Laying down some stone, fixes that, it's a nice.
I'm not gonna re, I'm not gonna do improvements on a road that's not ours until I know it's ours. And like you said, you have things and you're busy, so you don't do things. We have guys that are shorthanded, that are busy, that we don't have time to do that. You know, you know, tomorrow, so.
I'd like to get the information. Contact Putnam County, they'll give you every code possible.
Well, we, the one, you have the code there, it's specific.
I'm going to contact them and get it for you, so.
Oh, okay, I thought you had it, didn't you just cite that earlier? I thought you cited it.
I was full of section one seventy-five. I'll get you that from the first.
Are both streets in the same bad shape or is?
No, East Belvedere is by far worse. My, my issue with Hamilton is the circle at the end. Our plows are just really not equipped for it. I would have to bring up, uh, the Bobcat or the Baco to get it semi-decent. Normally, the homeowner at the end has his own tractor, and he's been graciously coming out for as long as I've been working here to help us out.
Graciously, it's his road, I mean, I appreciate the graciously, but it's their road and not ours. So we've been graciously going in while he's been clearing his own road.
Understood.
The other thing is, Hamilton has a turnaround, whereas East Belvedere.
East Belvedere, you have to back in.
But you, you back in both?
I back in both, correct.
You back, you back in both, all three there?
Correct.
Yep.
Those are two, like, the town of Phillips Town, we took over a road, it has to be up to your specs before they took it over.
Before you take it over, right.
We, we might get a dirt road society in the village. They can keep the road.
Okay, before, before Bugsy leaves, I just wanted to thank him, um, you know, we've been shorthanded by two guys, he's down to Lake himself, and Kenny Trimble, and Tommy Hopper on, on garbage, so thank you for holding it together. We got guys coming in, uh, Calvary's on the way, but, uh, thanks for the, you know, Scott, also Scott Monroe helped us. He came in, helped us with garbage on, uh, from the Water Department lent to us by Greg, so you guys did a great job on, on the disertments, and then we had a snowstorm, of course.
Or two.
Complicated matters, so, so thank you.
Thank you.
Who are these guys gonna start, just?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
It's official.
Yes.
Okay, um, next, Cold Spring Film Society, um, is the request room, the president?
Prophecy for a second on this one.
Oh. Okay, yeah, hold me on this one, it might, so we need your input. Let's see, it's, uh, from Jen Zorik, uh, did she mention anything to you about storing a trailer down there?
Excuse me?
Did she mention, or have you talked to her, any, on, uh, storing a trailer down there from the Film Society?
The Highway Garage.
Has who spoken to me?
No, okay.
Stay, don't run.
Bugsy, is, is the BBBB trailer still down there?
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah, there's, and there's some stuff.
They've gone out of business.
So I don't know whose trailer it is, we have to.
I'm sorry to hear that.
Yeah, they went out.
They're nice, they're nice people.
So maybe we should, Jeff, send them a letter and ask them to move their, move their stuff.
They said they were gonna move, they were gonna take everything out of there, I don't know, but it looks like they're still a boat or something on. Well, they didn't take, they meant taking everything out of the trailer, I don't know where the trailer is.
It's, it's, I'd have to go down and look again, and believe me, it's just such repetitiveness of going in and out. I'm kinda looking to see if there's county trucks coming out the other way more than I am looking to see what building, bridges and boats has there.
Anyway, um, Film Society is, uh, requesting, um, that they, they have their, they wanna put a, get a trailer to put all their film equipment in, you know, like their screen and stuff and tables, you know, like not a huge trailer, I don't know if she was.
I think she said it's a lot of.
A six foot by ten trailer.
So roughly the same size as the one the Fire Department.
Right, yes, similar to that, and they needed a place to park that.
Not a problem at all.
Okay. Okay.
Great. That was easy, thank you.
Thanks, folks.
I don't think we need a motion on that, there we're gonna be.
No.
He said it was okay. He said it was okay, it works.
Uh next is uh Kids Fishing Day requests of Nelsonville Fish and Fur. Now I know what, now I know what Mary was talking about. Nelsonville Fish and Fur, request to use the reservoir on Fishco Road, uh May sixth, uh we are hosting the annual Kids Fishing Day, event is from eight till four. Powers and R will provide a certificate of insurance, thank you, Edmund Carey. I'll make a motion to approve the use of the reservoir for May sixth between eight and four for the Kids Fishing Day.
I'll second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we get back here, approval of Bill's batch four five four six?
Uh yes, for a total of forty thousand five hundred and ninety-eight dollars and seventy cents.
I make a motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Michael, did you get that batch number, you have it, or you have it, never mind. Uh let's see, approval of minutes. Uh let's see, approval of minutes, um Village Board of Trustees, January twenty-third. Seven eighteen, I have a motion to accept.
So moved.
I have a second.
Second.
You have discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um approval of minutes, uh January thirtieth, Board of Trustees. I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
I'm a second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh approval of minutes, February thirteenth.
Well, I'd like to move to table this one, well, basically, I had junior motion first, and then I'll table.
Uh yeah, I'll I'll make the motion, if I have a second.
So moved.
Discussion.
Yeah, the re- the reason why I want to table is that there, I had two questions on it, and uh the video wasn't up, so I'll have to go back and just listen to the video. Uh unless someone has, can remember, the first question, Dave, was um under the Putnam County District Attorney, says Mayor Miranda noted that twenty percent of drug cases are alcohol related, I didn't think that was what you had said. I thought you said twenty percent of arrests of are alcohol related or something, I wasn't too sure.
I think that went across his, uh you know, that he um.
I know he was talking about drug cases, but it seemed to me that that wasn't.
No, that's not what he, that's not what he was saying, it was the uh the amount of cases that went before him, I think twenty percent were alcohol related, but I don't remember exactly.
Okay, I mean, we can table it and and uh Michael's gonna get the video up, and then there was, I have another question on on the HDRV piece, so if you don't mind.
Okay. Okay. Okay, no, 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 I'll make a motion to table minutes from February thirteenth.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, back to approvals, minutes, February twenty-seven. I'll make a motion to accept.
So moved.
So you're a second?
I'm seconding.
Second, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
And finally, approval of minutes, uh March sixth.
Make a motion to accept, approve.
I will second, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Anything else?
That's uh, does East Belvedere get plowed out by us right now?
Yes, Village Plows, East Belvedere and Hamilton.
Yes. And I don't know where this game started or how, you have any history?
Uh well, as you know, those three streets are um primarily uh post-World War Two, World War Two or post-World War Two, with a few exceptions. Um they've they've always been, to the best of my knowledge, they've, I don't know when Ham, sorry, West Hill, uh what?
We do.
Got turned into a village street, I don't know the answer to that one, but to the best of my knowledge, uh Hamilton and East Belvedere have, they are, they are private streets. Um and I I don't know what section uh Arenas is quoting, um mm, the village does not maintain, does not collect garbage, recyclables, or plow the other two private streets in the village.
Okay, well.
And and he says, East Belvedere is treacherous, treacherous to walk on.
Anything from the public?
I just have a question, I don't know where you're referring to me. Oh wait, wait, it's a simple one, um about the sewer fees, you need the bond, the sewer fees are linked to a pending bond, and you need the bond for what, was it the repair of the dams or?
No, no, that's a separate bond.
It's a separate.
The sewer is.
The, there's a band, there's a band we currently have going to work on the pump stations, the one that Greg's working on or will be working on at the Metro North Station, uh the ones that have previously been repaired.
And the relining.
And the relining of the sewer.
The relining of Fair Street, Fair Street, and I think there were three other streets, but the primary one was Fair Street, so there are three private.
Okay. Yeah. So according to what Michelle has told us, it's not good to keep bands on, keep renewing bands endlessly, so you you bond them, you eventually bond them, that's got nothing to do with the bond we have for the dam.
Right. Right.
That's that's not even in discussion.
Okay, so this is a bond, this is a bond for relining and otherwise repairing sewers.
It's, yeah, it's stuff that we have.
And the pump stations.
Relining the sewer on Fair Street and redoing the pump station, it it's a total of about eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars worth of work,
and we have a a grant for twenty-five percent of that.
Okay.
And so we will eventually, once it's all sort of bonded, the whole thing, rather than renewing the band every year.
You may remember, I I'm not sure if you if you remember, there were uh not really large trucks, but trucks on Fair Street where they were, the relining was to send a membrane, if I if I remember correctly, send a membrane down the sewer pipe, and 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 by the way, Fair Street is is one of the deepest sewer lines in the village, and it's also very old, uh and it also gets a lot of use, because that's the path where most of the sewage to get to the sewage disposal point, so they had this this, it was really quite interesting uh process to reline it.
Was that sewer line made by the foundry?
Original?
I don't know. I don't. The prob, I'm guessing not, because we didn't get water, we didn't get village water until.
I think water, this is just, uh my recollection, but water came in in like eighteen ninety-five, it was sewer about ten years later, but.
I was just gonna say the turn. The the turn of the century, and I think pretty much by that time, the foundry was out of business, and that was water, I don't know when the sewer lines were laid.
I think the sewers were like nineteen oh five or something, anyway.
Okay.
When are you coming back to the sewer rate question?
Whenever you'd like, the sewer rate question is because the sewer, I correct me if I'm wrong, Marie knows a little more, is the is the rate was because at the end of every year, it's very tight, uh uh the budget for that is always tight, and she had to borrow it in the previous years from our fund balance, so one way is to raise, is to increase the rates, just for general, you know, the general sewer use, not not this whole uh bonding that we're talking about.
Right.
But I think. But it would go a ways toward paying the interest on the bond.
I think Michelle's gonna work some numbers for us, and probably it's gonna be on the agenda next week, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Just just to give you an idea, in the fiscal year two thousand eighteen ninety, the projected income from the sewer flat rate is forty, four hundred and two thousand dollars. The total budget for the water and for the wastewater, the sewer and wastewater treatment, is approximately five hundred and four thousand dollars. There there are two components there, one is the flat rate, and the other is the sewer use rate, and we're proposing to change the flat rate.
Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all, it's been fun. Um, do you want to do the same question about the parking lot?
Uh yeah, you should, you guys, you got the uh parking first, sorry, the um the work on the pump station and the parking lot for Metro North, it's going to affect, the people will still be able to drive through, but it's gonna be one-way circulating around, I don't have the map on me.
It's on the Facebook.
It's on Helen Current.
It's also, it's on the Facebook page, the notice Facebook page, we put the notice up in the map, so the people know.
Helen Current has it online.
Can I get copies of the couple of them?
Sure.
Like your memorandum of agreement with the fire company, just like that. See if you see if.
Give me a touch.
There's a memorandum of agreement?
Yeah.